Okay, time being seven o'clock, this meeting is called to order. Rule call please.
Frank?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
Clemish?
Here.
Michael? Schultz?
Here.
Williams? Healy?
Here.
Welch?
Okay, like to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to said minutes?
Move approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, motion carried, one abstained. Are there any items to be added to this agenda? Okay, hearing none, could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations for today's agenda?
No.
None.
No?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Seven oh five. Is anybody up seven oh five on their clock?
We have to wait four minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Should I talk really slow?
While we're waiting?
I guess.
Do you want to talk about that checklist at all, Gary?
Oh sure, there we go.
Is that in this?
Yeah, so, um, first, second page.
It's right here. It's on the inside of each application.
Well, a couple of meetings ago, that, you know, we were talking about if there's any way to try and streamline the process a little bit and make it a little easier for you all, so, so, um, we thought maybe a checklist would be helpful. You can just zip down and make notes and then it's ready for the minutes right away. And, uh, so, yeah, hopefully it's something that we'll keep testing and if it works, it'll just make things easier for all of us down the line. So, hopefully, uh, take, test it tonight and see how it goes.
Thank you very much for that.
No problem.
That was very nice of you to put forth the extra effort. And thank you for separating the items and stapling it. I really do appreciate that. I'm sorry it's extra work for you, but I can tell you I honestly super appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
That's all I can take a moment just to mention. We have two people going off the board, uh, this, this year in April, so if anyone's interested in applying for the planning commission, let us, let me know, so. John and Michael.
Did we put a notification? Has that gone out in the newspaper yet?
Sorry, again, the newspaper has it last Friday and Saturday.
We got any applications in you?
Oh, no.
No?
Yeah. We're just assuming we're gonna get all kinds of.
They'll be lining up outside the door.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Thomas and Beth Keltzoulas for a CUP applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a self-storage warehouse in a Lakeside Commercial District. Said property is legally described as Lot 27 of Lewis and Clark Business Center, located in the south, 645 feet, except for Lot H2 in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 16, T-93 North, Range 55, 56 West, hereinafter referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. Good evening.
Hi.
Um, just state your name for the record, please.
Beth Keltzoulas.
Yes.
Thanks. So, your self-storage building, how many units does it have?
This will have 14.
14, okay. And it's 16 foot tall, so it'll accommodate those big campers people like.
Correct.
Looks like you have ingress and egress.
We do.
How are you doing?
We're good. Oh, great.
Hi. Have you heard any feedback from neighbors on letters sent out or anything? There's none?
We have not.
Okay.
Will this be built, it looks like there's two parcels that you guys own? Is it gonna be on both of those or just one, or?
Both.
Both of those?
We, it was originally two lots and then we replanted it this past fall.
Okay. So it's just one, one lot now?
Just one, yep. Twenty-seven.
I haven't updated my computer yet, so it shows it as two, but, thank you.
There should be a new plan in your packet showing that.
Yep, I, I, yes, can you see that?
Yep. And it looks like you've met all your setbacks, we don't have to put a variance on anything, correct?
Correct.
There won't be any plumbing to this building, will there?
Um, there should be no reason for any plumbing there. We, um, we may have sprinkler system.
Oh, sure, okay.
Is that your use of sprinkler system or content sprinkler system?
What do you mean?
So if you had a sprinkler, is that like for irrigation outside or content to the building?
It would be for the lawn, lawn structure.
Pretty straightforward, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I'm just checking out the boxes here. They got parking, they have refuse. You have a place for refuse, I'm assuming there somewhere?
Yes, we have a lot, Lot 22, so we have refuse for both lots there.
Okay. And this is all commercial in that area, so I don't see any necess- necessity for any screening or buffering with trees or anything like that.
Uh, we probably will plant trees, but, I mean, trees or bushes.
Okay.
Are you guys planning on having some kind of a sign, Tom?
No.
No sign at all?
No. We haven't before and haven't needed it, so.
Okay, are you going to have downcast lighting then?
Correct, yes.
And I'm assuming from your drawing here, you've got adequate space for people to park. It looks like you've got more than enough space there, so.
Correct.
That shouldn't be an issue.
Is this gonna be open like 24 hours a day?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just gonna be inside storage, no outside storage?
Correct.
Okay, so seventeen twenty-nine. Do you have any other questions for him before I ask for public input, or is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Pretty straightforward. It's a pretty popular business model for that area. Anyone else have a question before? All right, well, I guess you can have a seat if you'd like.
Thank you.
Um, you bet, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular issue? Okay, hearing none, time for public input is now closed. Do we have any more discussion or a motion from the board?
Could move approval of the Keltzoulas CUP based on findings of fact.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Think it's a good fit for the area. Okay, rule call vote whenever you're ready.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, East River Elec- Electric CUP applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a communication tower. Said property is legally described as East River Electric, addition, the north half of the northwest quarter, Section 17, T-93 North, fifty, range 56 West, hereinafter referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Paul Letchy, representing East River Electric, uh, requesting a conditional use permit for, uh, AGL maximum 65-foot con tower to be located within an existing substation, uh, as described legally, is also known as the Gavin's Point Substation. Uh, we originally submitted our application and we were before the planning commission on December 10th, where the commission cited concerns about, uh, agreement by the adjacent landowner to the east and fall radius of the tower. We have since gone back and taken another look at the situation. Our con group has indicated strongly to us that the tower needs to be in that proximity to the building for the communications to function properly. So what we did was we went back to the tower engineer and requested options for the fall radius in the tower. And I, should be in your packet, he has submitted revised designs that strengthen the lower half of the tower over what the original tower was overall, creating what he calls a theoretical fail point, which would in a catastrophic event cause the tower to fold over on itself rather than fall outside of the substation. We have also in a letter submitted with our application requested exemption from Article 25 due to the nature of the project and the, the items cited in the letter. I've also been in contact with the adjacent landowner. Drake Investment LLC is the owner of the adjacent property to the east. I was able to get in contact with their registered agent, who is an attorney in Yankton, who put me in contact with Keith Ickhart, who is the managing member of Drake Development out of Hastings, Nebraska. And he actually just, uh, I had a conversation with him, he cited no objection. I asked him to reply to an email I sent him to formally state that he had no objection. Uh, he actually responded to that email when I was on my way down tonight. So I asked Jessica to, I forwarded her the email and asked Jessica to print out copies, which I have copies for everybody if you'd like those.
Yes, I'd like one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
I guess to start with, I know we talked about the majority of this last time, but because it's a new hearing, we should go through some of, um, just with the CUP in general, ingress, egress, things of that nature, so we have that on record.
Of course.
There's existing drive there, there's existing parking and existing lot.
Correct.
Remember, was there signage on there or going to be? There is signage on the substation itself. We will, uh, we will apply the appropriate FCC signage regarding the, the tower as it is installed. Okay.
Do you have a, uh, some sort of easement or something with the state of South Dakota to get across that property there and theirs, or that's how you come in from?
Yeah, we, we've come in off the highway across that core ground. I don't have documentation for that, but there would be an agreement in place whether it be an access easement or, which I can sure provide. There'd almost have to be, because otherwise you're.
Yeah, it'd have to be, you wouldn't be able to use it now.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
I mean, because it's inside the same enclosure that's existing.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
He could always provide that, as it moves up, goes to the county commission if you could provide a copy of that. Sometimes there's places where there isn't legal easement and the easement's been used for a long time.
Yeah.
Hopefully on this one, there's an actual easement.
I would imagine, given the nature of the facility, that it was probably arranged one way or another, so I will look for that documentation.
The Core Engineers did a realignment of properties on 52 about five years ago, verification of boundaries, and they also have a tower on top of our radio tower, so I know it permits for doors left.
Well, you got all of the information for engineering and all of that stuff. We appreciate the time and effort that you spent in getting all of that together. Uh, it was kind of interesting. I never thought of a tower as only being two feet wide on each side, you know, triangular self-supporting tower. So there are no guy wires on it, it's self-supporting, right?
It is self-supporting, and that is, it's pretty standard style tower that we use inside of our substations. Of course, on the older style substations, the newer substations, like the one we brought through back in December with this one, require the bigger footprint, taller towers. But, um, the older subs can primarily be served when we do con by the, by the 24-inch lattice towers, pretty standard design. Aside from this one, we've obviously applied the, the contingency for the fall radius.
Right, right. And I saw they, you've got the two 10-foot sections in there, so if it buckles, it's gonna buckle there.
Yeah, so they went with a, a larger tubular steel on the bottom half. I think originally it was gonna be all one and three-quarter, and then they beefed the bottom half up with a two-inch.
If, let's question out, if there's a safer way to build them, how come, is it, is it cost, it too much to build them this way always, or why would you build them the other way then? If there's a newer, better, safer?
So, the, the contingencies that are built into this tower are specifically because of the fact that we are so close to the adjacent property.
I understand that, I'm just wondering, is, is, is it a huge cost difference between this one and the one you were planning on doing? And I don't need numbers, I'm just curious.
I, it, there is, there is a cost factor. Um, redesign, it's a special design, so there's additional cost in the design and then additional cost in the materials. And as I stated, typically, if we've got clearance from all our property lines, we're gonna opt to build the standard towers.
Yeah. If there's a better way, it's like, it's too expensive.
Question more for probably Gary or Jessica. Basically asking for an exemption from Section 20, Article 25. I think we want to probably approve or disapprove based on 25, 26, that relief section, just so it's clear in the, in the record, I guess, that it's not a variance to the, to the full minutes, it's. I don't have any more questions myself, but.
I, I don't know, I guess part of going through Article 25, and it was miserable last time, but that just reiterates why we need to update that article, 'cause it was terrible going through it. And I guess if, I understand the point of giving relief on it, but, you know, we have that article in, in place and, you know, we did it on the other ones, so I guess that's, that's up to the board to decide, but.
Well, that's what I was saying, is we're not, we're not ignoring 25, it's outlined in 25, 26. And I.
No, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I think we found the majority of things to be not applicable, and I, I believe a lot of the things we were concerned with are, are covered in the letter.
Sure, no, I, I, I agree with all of that, but going through the pain is like, wow, you know, we gotta do something with this, and, so.
Well, and this is, this is essentially an upgrade to an existing facility. It's not like this is a brand new, out in the field somewhere situation. If it falls, it's gonna fall within that fenced-off, policed area already, so then he will just be breaking his own stuff, so.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Hopefully not.
I believe the tower's rated to 90 mile an hour.
90 mile an hour winds, yeah, I know, I saw that. And then they factored in ice loads and stuff like that, too. Do we have any other questions from the board before I ask for public input? Nope, okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular agenda item? Okay, hearing none, the time for public input is now closed. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Don't have anything else to add, no.
All right, thank you. Um, so, do we have any additional discussion or motion from the board?
Oh, screening was, I'd see just, I knew there was something. Screening we discussed last time, and you mentioned some trees. What became of the discussion on screening? I see your, any screening here in your letter, so that would create a safety concern? Last time, it seemed to meant, if I recall correctly, you mentioned that you thought there would be no problem with.
This is what I brought back to our engineering group, asking them their thoughts on the screening, and that was the answer that they gave me. They prefer no screening because then the, uh, the personnel that are going in to do inspections and switching in the substation can't fully see within the substation to inspect for hazards prior to entering, entering the facility.
That makes sense.
I guess it makes sense, I mean, you don't have to plant the tree right next to it, whatever.
Right, but I mean, it's not like this isn't something that's been there forever.
Since 1971.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the people around know it's there, so, I don't see that it's, like I said, it's not a new situation. That's my opinion on the matter. And if it's a safety issue, I think we need to put the lives of the people that have to work there.
Well, I don't know if it's a, I don't, you say it's a safety issue, but I mean, because they don't want to get out of the truck and peek around the corner first, I mean, I, you know what I mean? I don't understand the safety issue of putting up a tree so you can't see a fenced facility.
You're talking something outside the fence or around the perimeter.
Right.
And I think this is probably talking about something around the tower, maybe.
Around the tower itself.
Okay, 'cause we had talked about.
Yeah, we did.
A tree line as a visual barrier from nor- somebody driving by in a car, so they don't necessarily see what's going on in there. I think that's what, isn't that something we discussed?
Yeah, is this whole facility fenced? You, you got a fence around it?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, it's all.
And I think we talked about some sort of.
For safety.
Buffer, well, you know, something with the, the fence too for screening too, but I don't know, remember what came of it? I, I remember that though from.
I just thought I'd bring it up because I recalled it from.
It's a good point.
If it's not a concern, then just, well, there hasn't seemed to be anybody here complaining about it, so.
No. I think if I remember years ago, as we talked about these things in different places and different, different situations where we talked about buffering, we talked about mostly vandalism, and especially this area here where there are people just up over the hill. I mean, if you get kids coming down, climbing that fence or climbing under the fence and getting, I mean, I, I prefer people on the highway to be able to see that there's an issue, you know, maybe call law enforcement or something, because it's, it's, it's tempting to go mess with that stuff, your kids, you know? It is.
Yeah, logic just doesn't.
And that kid, were you?
The kind that comes out on Halloween night.
I used to climb them sons of guns.
We have also had incidences where, um, some of our other substations, we've had some problems, copper theft. And we've, we've had calls, for, well, we would get a call from sheriff that got a call from an adjacent landowner saying that.
There's somebody in there.
Hey, there's somebody in your substation. And so, obviously, very dangerous situation for them to be in, and, um, when they go in there and cut the grounding cables, is what they're looking for is copper.
Right.
Those are all our grounding cables, and then that creates a hazard for the, the workers too, because then the substation's grounded copper.
All right, anything else? All right, anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion from the board. Unless someone else has something else they want to address.
I'll make a motion that we grant this conditional use permit to East River Electric Hall.
For the construction of the tower.
For the construction of communications tower.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Would you mind, Donna? I think we should, should spell out per section 25-26.
Are we going to, are we going to grant him relief in Article 25?
You can amend your motion.
What's that, you want?
Go ahead and amend her motion.
I was going to say, uh...
More than make it, you want, it's all right.
Yeah, you can make your...
Yeah, I...
I'm not very concerned.
I was going to say to approve, to all make a motion to approve, uh, East River Electric CUP, um, per section 25-26, relief as discussed in the findings of fact.
Do we have to somehow mention that easement? You know, coming up to the commissioners?
Yeah. That's a good point.
I don't see it being an issue, I mean, we can probably look at it.
I think it'd be smart just to mention that he's, he knows if he's going to bring a copy of that easement as this moves forward to the county commission.
Can you do that?
I can.
We should somehow attach that...
You've got to have an easement, because you've got to be able to have fire and everybody go in there, so, you know, it's best to have that easement down on paper.
We wish that property's at work, but we have to get an easement.
That's right.
I don't know how to attach that, Joe, you get this up.
I don't, I guess, I don't know...
I don't think it's really...
You can just, you can just put it under the condition, just make it a condition.
Provide it a copy of the easement is supplied.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, here we go. We'll call vote whenever you're ready. Thank you for your time and effort.
Harper?
Yes.
Quinisch?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Fring?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda, Diane and James Johnson, we have a plat for Big Bucks Edition, being a replat of lots one and two and three of Government Lot One of the southeast quarter of Section 12, also being a part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 12, all being in T-93 North, Range 55 West, and being located in Government Lot Four and Government Lot Six in Section Seven, T-93 North, Range 54 West. Is that correct? Okay. All being in the 5th PM Yankton County, South Dakota. Anything you want to share with us about this plat?
Oh, we have no representatives for this item here tonight, but this plat's been in front of you before.
Yep, before, yep.
It had a lower acreage, it was requested at that time, if, if they possibly could to add acreage to get over the 20, 20-acre minimum, so that's what they did.
Super. And I see he's got ingress and egress, plod it out there.
He's basically plotting all of those together then?
Correct.
So, did you know that there wasn't going to be a representative here tonight, or?
It's just a plat, they're not asking for anything special.
Oh, just curious.
Yeah. Do we have any other questions for him? Anyone in the audience want to speak about this fascinating plat? Hearing none. Time for public input is now closed. Okay. So, they did what they asked, they got it above 20 acres.
You know, like, can I make a comment about this?
Oh, absolutely.
It's the same.
Yes.
It might be standard, but I don't know, I mean, if we have a question relying on a county official to give an answer for an applicant, and I don't think that's right. The applicant's not here, to answer questions about their own project, I don't care if it's just a plat or what.
Technically, you have to...
Then, then to the other, but...
Well, that's what I was saying.
I don't know what they, I don't know. I don't know if that's proper, really, I don't know.
Well, they've done that in the past.
Well, I don't care what's been done in the past, there's been a lot of things done in the past, I mean, I'm just, is that really, what, couldn't we be in a situation theoretically where we wouldn't, if we had a question, that they wouldn't be...
Well, I think if it was an, something that was questionable about the plat, then yes, we could table it or decide not to act on it, but I don't see anything here that is improper. Is, is, I mean, if you see something that you feel is improper...
I guess, I guess what bothers me more is that we just say, well, that's, that happens all the time, or that's been done before, or that's kind of standard procedure, but is that really something we should go, maybe this is a, for after this, but procedural thing?
My feeling is that it would be, even if it's a CUP, it's probably up to the applicant, if they want to come or not, and, and take that risk, you know, we could either table or we could deny it.
Deny it, right. If there was something questionable about it, it could be denied, and if they made the choice not to appear on their own topic, their own issue, then that's on them.
The difference between like a CUP and a plat is...
But, this is a totally different thing, this is just...
A plat gets walked around the courthouse, in other words, it gets shown to all the offices. So, the questions on, you know, from the register of deeds and equalization and everything, it gets walked to all those offices, so all those people kind of have to...
They kind of have...
...eliminarily okay this before we get it. So, you know, I mean, it isn't like we couldn't have a question, but chances are the question that we have couldn't be the kind of question for which we could deny this plat. See what I mean? We may have a question, but the question that we have may not be of the level where we could deny a plat. In other words, we're only really allowed to deny a plat, first of all, handful of reasons. So, you know, usually when it goes from office to office, those reasons kind of have been matter, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I hear you.
So, it, it's been, it isn't like they just bring in a plat and give it to Gary, and he brings it in here, it's got to go all around. It used to be the, the, the person with the plat, we used to have to walk it around ourselves from office to office, and now it goes to the, to the zoning office and they walk it around. So, there's, there's been, all the offices in the courthouse have kind of okayed this, you know, from, from the questions that they would have. So, you know, yeah, there's probably some time where there would be something, I mean, there has been a time where I had a question on a plat, but it really wasn't, in the long run, something for which we could deny the plat, it was just a kind of a gray area. And if the offices are usually okay with it, you know, then it's, it's technically, they're the ones who have to make the decision. In other words, there is some leeway in the offices, like the register of deeds and stuff, you know, where they can make decisions based on what they want or the way they want something. But, we only have really a few reasons for which we can deny a plat, so...
And we certainly tell people that if possible, in this case, these owners live out of state right now, and, and so they're not currently around, but we always encourage, if possible, that we send some kind of representative if possible.
Well, they had a representative the first time.
They did, a lot of times, correct.
I just think as a matter of basic procedure, that's my opinion, I just...
But I think in this case, they felt like, well, we met what you were asking for, and so they, they were hopeful anyway that there wouldn't be any question this time.
I believe that, that's one of the things we said, is to plat it all together. I mean, I think that was one of the advice we gave, you know, and that's kind of what they've done here.
And they met their 20-acre limit as well, so, I mean, they were trying to, to ask to accommodate what we had requested, so...
I appreciate the discussion, I just thought of this.
Sure.
Good point.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plat as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll call vote when you're ready.
Quinisch?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Fring?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Motion carried. So, nope.
There are none.
None? Yay! All right, thank you.
Gary, do you want to discuss the time at all?
I think we'll do that in the April meeting, in the time that we change. One of the things that I brought up, and we'll bring it up in the April meeting, is if, if you wanted to consider moving this meeting to 6:00 PM to match with the other two meetings, if they're all consistent, if possible, down the line, and when the new two, the two new people are on board, we will have that discussion again in the...
I'll have to think about that one, because I almost didn't make it here by seven tonight. I had animals out, I had to dig snow out of a fence, and, and, yeah, and I...
I don't, I only live a few blocks away, so...
Yeah, and, and I teach in an area 45 minutes from here, and, um, sometimes I got kids after school, because they're naughty, and, yeah...
You certainly understand. We have been asked in the past, too, about, about having that consistent time throughout, and if it work, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
I'll think about that one. I don't know if everybody has the same...
As a consideration of the public, too, you know, if people get off work at 5:30, and they got to go get kids at daycare or whatever, seven o'clock is like, okay, they can do all these pieces, so it's something I, you know, will look at.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that? Next item on the agenda is discussion of zoning ordinance changes.
Yeah, I got something on that. Madam Chairman, um...
Yes.
We all have approved the accessory structures, um, and, uh, we had a, a first reading here, and it went to the county commission, and then had some flooding, and, and then a legal challenge to our zoning ordinance. The, the final reading will be at the next commission meeting, and so, I guess, uh, it didn't make sense to move ahead on any of these when, when our zoning ordinance was being challenged. But I think now we can go back through, and if it's all right with anybody else, it's been quite a while since we did the reading here for the accessory structure, so, um, I don't, I think we were all in agreeance, but we should probably have notice and then have another reading for that at the next meeting and move that one along, if that's okay with any, everybody, I mean, it was...
No, I think that's a great idea.
It was, we all agreed on everything.
Right.
Thought it was, um, it just kind of got stuck in limbo, and, um, so I think the time's to move that one forward, so...
Super. I think that's an excellent idea.
I guess on, on that, my only thing I would maybe mention or have us consider is potentially having one meeting to discuss rezoning of the, of the rural transitional, and get that at the same time, if we can fit that all in at the, you know...
Is that for the one that we did, the Mar Court one, or, or is that a different?
Right, yeah. And so, we're either, you know, either have another meeting where we come to consensus on, on just that lot, or we hash out what that rural transitional is going to be. I know that might be more than one simple meeting, but I guess if we can, I would encourage us to try to get that done. At the very least, just we add the Mar Court plot to it, maybe, um, a rezone, and then work to develop it, but... Everybody else has thoughts on that?
Where is that one in the process of the rezone agreement? We, we have...
We pretty much tabled it, because we said we had...
Well, we kind of approved it and just said we're going to wait until...
Until it gets through this transition.
Through the transition.
So, you'd need a first reading for that and the other one? I don't see why we couldn't do them together.
Right.
It makes sense to me.
Since that's ready to go away.
And I, I believe with accessory structure, last time, we, we also were going to add fireworks to Article 10 for commercial, and everybody agreed with, I, I think that we had that as the reading, so... I don't see any issue with that. All right, makes sense to me.
Do we have anybody on that public comment list? Or is there anything else you guys wanted to say about that right now?
I guess my two cents on that is as long as they're in the same, same stage of the process, we're going to hold up.
Right.
The accessory structures was waited long enough.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Needs to move forward, is my opinion, so...
No, I agree.
Don't want to delay that anymore, it's a no-brainer, I think.
Needs to happen, yeah.
Well, it's one of the few things that we've all had a consent.
Yeah.
Came to a pretty simple, easy consensus about it, uh, it'd be nice to see it get taken care of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's coming up on buildings, building season here, and the people have to come in, they want to start to make the decisions, I just don't want to hold up the public, or, you know...
Process going. Absolutely. Works, works done, it's time to move forward.
The thought was, you know, we did a public hearing for this, but it's been so long, it's probably best we just go through the whole process again, so, we'll have that ready for next month.
Okay, sounds great. Anything else?
So, next month might be a little longer, but this, this dream meeting, everything...
Okay.
Can we get a little bit of an update on the zoning code and what's been, I mean, I, maybe I missed it, I wasn't here the last meeting, is, what's happened since the last meeting as far as regulations, zoning, or emergency zoning, is there anything new that we need to hear from the commission?
We're just waiting on, uh, second reading at the commission level, and then wait our period in adoption, so...
Just thought I'd check, because I, I think sometimes there's, maybe there's assumptions that get made, that everybody knows what's going on.
Sure, sure.
Listen, if I don't, I don't read the paper every day, and if it doesn't get stated officially at a meeting, it doesn't happen as far as...
Sure, that makes sense.
I'm just making sure to come up to date.
Oh, yeah, we had the hearing here, and then the first reading, the commission last. Was that the previous commission meeting, last two? Jeez. And, uh, and so at the next meeting, we'll have a second reading, and then be ready for adoption.
Okay.
And then we can start making, actually making changes.
Okay. Um, I just remembered, next month, I have parent-teacher conferences, and that is a contract date, and she will not let me out of it, um, so I won't be able to get here before about 8:45, so if you could share that meeting until I come, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, but...
You're in the hot?
What the heck? Either that, or you could, you could do my conferences for me.
That'll do it.
So, manager, I guess, on the discussion of changes, if we go forward with, with what's teed up, I guess I'd like to begin discussion on the next changes, the next phase, and I think I've talked with Gary a little bit about it, I'll see how everyone else thinks, but there's a handful of odds and ends... but there's a handful of odds and ends and loose things that I think we should probably have a round of, call it cleanup within the ordinance. And then from there, maybe we start into actual sections and whatever, but.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about some of the language issues, and.
Well, you had one with non-conformance.
You've done a lot of.
Well, that's what I'm kinda wondering, if we're gonna go through having a, a public hearing again for the accessory structures. We were, we were at that point with section two and section 16. And you have, you have all that, you know, I put all that down.
Yeah, I've already redlined a draft with all those changes.
So, if we're gonna start over again with the public hearing, we could certainly throw those two things in, 'cause those are like what you're talking about, just cleanup kinda things, making the ordinance read by the way that we actually.
How we use the ordinance now.
Yeah, you know, putting the ordinance in line with what we actually do. And I know, and whether we do that in this one, if it's all ready, we just as well. Yeah, that stuff is all, we've had the, we've had the, everything here except the public hearing, you know, so we've had all that, so. Okay. So, do we wanna discuss the next round? I know there's more than that that you've come across.
Yeah, and that's the thing. We need to have that discussion of how far we want to take that. And there's numerous things that can be discussed, especially things like Article 25. You know, we've talked about the platting process, whether or not we wanna move forward on having one single process, those kinda things. So, there's a number of things that we'll be discussing in the months to come.
The checklist that, that you gave us was helpful for the conditional use. You know, I don't know how many people here have actually put plats through. But it wouldn't be bad for some of them to see the checklist that gets used when you do these plats. In other words, the verification of who owns it, and the taxes being paid, and all these things are done. This is what I was talking about, gets done in the building. You know, I don't think we have to do it all the time, but I think it would be a good thing, because we're starting with all the plats coming here now. It would be really nice if we saw the checklist of everything that gets done, so that if somebody has questions, you know, they know that there's a whole checklist of things that were gone through before these plats came to us.
Yeah, 'cause I, I would have to tell them how they do that.
Yeah, there's, you know, you gotta, you gotta go up to equalization, and you gotta, you know, make sure you own the property, you gotta make sure the taxes are paid, you gotta make sure the legal's correct, you gotta do all these different things before it ever comes to us.
It'd be nice to have, so we got it in our book.
Yeah, so that we know it's all, you know, just show us, show us what's done, and then everybody will kinda know what's done, you know, on a checklist of how these plats are approved technically, what parts of them are approved before they come to us. 'Cause there's really only a few things that we can, you know, we could not approve them 'cause they don't have access, we could not approve them 'cause they're not the correct size. But there isn't really a lot of things for which we can say, we're not gonna approve your plat, as long as they've met all the other stuff. The state kinda lays that out in codified law, what you can, you know, what you can and can't, what you gotta meet. What's everyone's thoughts on next direction for making changes? I'm gonna be selfish, 'cause I'm gonna get really busy in about a month and a half, two months.
Probably all of us will be in one way, shape, or form. So, are you thinking about having like another working session?
That's what I'm thinking. If, if we've got, if we have ideas of a direction we wanna go, I, what I envisioned as far as changes is, is probably gonna be, what I envisioned is one large change that covers little bits of probably almost every article. It's gonna be cleanup. And then once cleanup is done, then I see we focus on certain articles.
That's a thing, but, I mean, someone has to go through there and pull that all off, put it on a checklist that we can go through and, and, I mean.
And Gary's been keeping a.
We're not going like, you know, spending all our night looking for.
Right. And Gary's been keeping kinda notes on some things that have been brought, like the platting process. You know, conditional use extensions has been, been discussed. And I think, you know, that's something we could, we could do.
Well, at one point, we had a kind of a priority list based on what the county commission had prioritized, right? I mean, there was some discussion back and forth.
Right.
We kinda had a priority list, and there were some of those things, you know, we sat here and talked about Class F. We came up, we have a.
It's still up there.
Is it still there?
Yeah, and that's something.
So, we've, we've gotten to certain points on other issues too, you know, some of the other issues too, not just the cleanup issues.
Well, that's why.
The thing about expiration, permit expiration, we could tackle that, and, I mean, it's gonna have to get tackled at some point, right? I mean, there's an issue there. I think that's what, I, I think there's an issue there. So.
I guess I'd like to get through.
So, do we, do we tackle, I'm sorry, Diane?
I guess I, and I agree with everything that's said, but I, I would almost rather, let's, let's get one of these done first, so we know the process. And because it, sometimes it's not just that article that it changes, sometimes it's the definition, sometimes it's other things. So, what everybody says is great, but, you know, my concern is we haven't got one through yet. So, let's get this, you know, let's get this one with accessory structures and commercial and non-conformance, and the ones we all agree on, 'cause, 'cause we all agreed on them, we all voted the same. No, nobody in the audience, or we have no public comment against it, let's get this easy one in, let's work the system, and then we can go after these other ones that we need to do. But that's, that's, I guess, what I would like to do. And so, if we have the first reading on these next month, then we can always schedule a, a special meeting in, in late, late March or mid-March or whatever after that, to then start working on these. But I think what we should do is send this down the line, get our reading, get our portion done, then we can focus on other things. That's how I'd like to see it, but.
I guess what I'm saying is, I know other things have popped up, but how many special meetings did we have to get to this point? You know, if we wait till the next meeting to even start discussions, we're four months out from potential changes again, and we've got more and more and more to look at. I guess I, what I'm suggesting is we have another meeting to put, maybe put together, okay, these are glaring issues that just jump out. Let's fix them. And we won't do first reading, we won't move forward.
Sure, sure.
Until this is through, but.
I understand, yep.
So, you just wanna have a working meeting to work, to work out.
That's what I'm suggesting. I guess I'm open for, see what people think, but.
One possibility, maybe we do not have a drainage commission meeting scheduled for this month. We didn't have any applications. So, the last Tuesday night is open, if that's something you want to consider.
Be fine with that.
What's the date on that?
25th.
The 25th.
Regardless if we have that, the Tuesday or whatever, can you generate a bullet points of kinda what you've seen or found, or things you think might, we need to discuss? And we'll start there.
Does 25th work for everyone?
I won't be here.
You won't be there?
That's my reason to stop, if anybody else.
Does anybody else have a conflict with the 25th? And what time did we wanna do it? Six o'clock or seven o'clock, or?
I won't.
Do it at six? Hmm?
I won't care.
On the 25th?
If everybody else can, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
I can, but I, I'm open the other nights too, so.
Okay. Well, do we wanna shoot for the 25th, or do we want to change it?
Why don't we shoot for it, and, you know, we'll see what we can accomplish. Even if people can't make, we can still get something at least.
We won't be making any, any, you know, legal action. It's just, it's just.
We're just, you know, maybe you guys, maybe we can get to the bullet points, and maybe if you see something.
Yeah, and if you wanna email us any ideas.
Right, right.
The last.
Or just email them to him.
They just say, keep it. If you come across something.
The other working meetings were similar to that. Not everybody was here.
Sure, yeah.
But it is, I think it's, I think it's good to make progress rather than.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, we want six or seven? What do you want, guys?
Let's do six.
Six o'clock? Okay, all right, that's fine. 6 p.m. Working meeting here. Got it? Thank you.
You'll send us an email to remind us right before?
Yeah, please do.
That would be good.
Okay. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's something else someone wants to bring up.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Stay here as long as you want.